Good evening, everyone. We are now going to have our, sorry, City Council Subcommittee on Conference to be held Wednesday, May 19th. The subject matter is to discuss the open meeting law complaint. The clerk will now call the role.
Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor Avingeleda?
Present.
Counselor Recupero, absent. Counselor Garcia, absent. Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent. Counselor Robinson. Counselor Rodriguez?
Here.
Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
And Counselor Zabit?
Here.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven members, President, have a call.
Okay, so the reason for this meeting is to discuss a complaint that was received by the City Council and referred to our Law Department on a possible or open meeting law complaint that was filed with the Attorney General. And we had, the law requires us to respond within 14 days. Fatima right now is handling, I'm sorry, handing out a copy of the complaint that was filed. And the evidence, so-called evidence, from that complaint of what this was about, you'll see that the, there is an open meeting complaint form, the instructions for filing it, and what the instructions are for a public body that receives it. So if you read the second paragraph of that, the instructions for a public body that receives a complaint, the chair must disseminate the complaint to the members of the public body, which we are doing right now. The body must meet to review the complaint within 14 days, usually 22, the 22 calendar days, this is what we're doing now. And after review, but within the 14 days, the public body must respond to the complaint in writing, and must be sent to the complainant a response and a description of any action the body, public body has taken to address the allegations in the complaint. At the same time, the body must send to the Attorney General a copy of the complaint and a copy of the response. The public body may delegate this responsibility to an individual member of the public body, its council or staff member, but only after the public body has met to review the complaint. If a, if a public body requires to, more time to review the complaint and respond, it must request an extension of the time for the good cause by contacting the Division of Open Complaint. You'll see then afterwards, once the body has responded to the complaint, if the person is not satisfied with the public body's complaint, they file a copy of the complaint but with the Division to the mail, handout, and wants to wait it 30 days. I believe that's after the person who filed it is satisfied. If we move on to the next one, next page, we'll see a timeliness of what it means to have untimely notice, incomplete revised notice, insufficient notice, those are the causes of which can be a complaint. Exhibit A shows the revised City Council meeting agenda of April 12th. Exhibit B is the online City Council meeting agenda. Exhibit C was the City Council meeting agenda, also that was filed online. Again, it was revised, you'll see a couple of dates there, it was submitted on April 1st, revised on April 1st at 5:16 PM, and then revised again on April 5th. Exhibit D is the, apparently, a copy of an original order that they are focusing on. This was the one regarding an order that I had introduced, asking the city manager to present a possible plan of action for taking either by friendly, eminent domain or friendly taking, the following parcels, the description of the parcels and the map that accompanied the original order. So at this time, I'm going to allow the city solicitor to provide us some instructions, and if she's talked to the complainant, and also I know that she's been in discussion with our staff person, and that, about what the complaint is about and how to proceed. So Solicitor Cheryl Watson.
Hi, everyone. So, everyone should be aware of the open meeting law, that basically everything that you do as a public body needs to be open and transparent, and notify, and the public needs to be reasonably noticed. So, what you don't know is that there's several fat facts behind this. During the pandemic, the official city board, as you know, we discussed in one of the meetings last summer or late spring, was that we were using the online website under the city clerk's department to post all agendas for the city. Normally, we just post on the bulletin board, but people could not access City Hall. But the official bulletin board is our official notice to all cities. And we need to discuss with the clerk's office if we're going to continue making the website our official bulletin board. So normally what happens is the city clerk posts all agendas for every board and commission's meeting, including the city council. But I think when Fatima started or sometime around the pandemic, the city council secretary would get the agenda date stamped, and this was after the interview with the city clerk's office, Fatima Malera, the city council secretary, I've even spoken to the city manager's assistant, Lourdes Alvarez, and to Kate Lent, who is our innovation person. So the city council secretary would take the agenda and get it timestamped at the city clerk, but bring it back and post it herself, on both the city clerk's calendar, the city calendar, and also on the city council webpage for ADA compliance, that's the American with Disabilities Act. We have to do it a different format, sort of, under the word for ADA compliance, for people to understand it and read it. So what happened in this situation was that there was an original complaint, date recorded, as opposed to what was alleged, that we untimely noticed what was happening in the city council. We have to follow our own deadlines and notice the city council agenda with all topics, 48 hours, 48 business hours before the meeting on Monday night. So Friday's too late. It has to be Thursday. So Fatima did, around 1:42 on Thursday, posted an agenda. However, she found out she needed to revise the agenda, there were several different changes in the agenda. The first was, we removed the fair share agreement, because that's what Counselor Garcia wanted. But we also added, which we probably should not have, but we added the orders around the collective bargaining agreements. The collective bargaining communication was on there, but the actual agreements, orders that the city council was going to vote on was not on the final, on the original agenda. So early Friday morning, she revised the agenda, had a timestamp. The problem is, is when she posted it in both locations, the original was removed. You can't do that. And the clerk's office doesn't do that, but Fatima wasn't told that. So that's the issue with what happened with the agendas and notification. So we timely posted it, unfortunately, the mechanics of revising the agenda wiped out the original agenda. I am recommending that the resolution to this is that the city clerk posts all agendas, not the city council clerk, as we have in the past. I believe Fatima and Lourdes have worked out how they're going to do the ADA compliance on the city council website, but at all times, the original should be there. So when you see the word, what he was just reading about dates and times for when it's revised, it's really dates and times is as it's updated, same word, but people get confused. And so Lourdes is working that out with IT, if we have to do that. If we keep the original and then the revised, it really doesn't matter what that date and time says on that page. So that's the untimeliness, which I think we have a response to. It was not an untimely posting, it was a error in the mechanics of posting a revised agenda. And revised agendas are for errors. So the fact that Counselor Garcia wanted something reviewed, removed, was too late. She should just withdraw it the night of the council meeting and not discuss it that Inadvertently forgetting to input the, the orders was probably too late. You can't add orders, and orders are what you vote on, so therefore, even if the communication was there, the public did not know you were actually going to vote on those orders pursuant to the original agenda. You were just reading the communication. So then, they alleged that you had an incomplete revised notice. It was a little weird, because they're going by the website, there's not much I can say to that, except for that the mechanics of the actual website did a lot of that information. We just, you know, we'll just make sure we post the original at all times and all revisions afterwards, if necessary. So then they talk about notice. So in both agendas, Counselor Avingeleda's order as to the parcels was in there. So there was no change in that notice, it was notified on the 8th, and it was notified on the 9th, both times it was timestamped. The problem is, is in the wording. Counselor Avingeleda attached a map and parcels? However, it didn't list the parcels, so if anybody read that agenda, it could have been any parcel in the city of Chelsea. It didn't say, "See attached listed parcels," to give someone a notice that they should call up and find out what the parcels are. We didn't even do that. So what we should do in the future is that if there's a list, it's either written out on the agenda, or it says, "See attached list available in the, in the city council's office." So what Fatima and I worked out is that on all agendas, if you wish to see the orders, they are available in the city council's office. And then the last allegation happens to be that we didn't inform the public. Again, you didn't vote on it that night, so there was no violation. It was a request for the city council, I guess if you read the order, for the city manager and the staff to look into whether or not these parcels are appropriate for eminent domain taking. Pretty much all we did, as you know, it was back on the agenda Monday night. So, that's the basis of the allegations against us, that's also the response, quickly, is what I would recommend that we state. I would also say the steps that we have taken, I do recommend that you appoint me to respond on your behalf. I guess that's something you have to discuss tonight. The public meeting is fine, the response isn't, isn't bad. I mean, you know, I've been in Chelsea 18 years, first time we've been hit up with a complaint for an open meeting law, but it was more about the clerical part of it, not an intention, but on behalf of the city council. And we just need to be, especially since we've been remote, careful about our agendas and how we state the orders that are written differently than what's in the agenda. We have to be specific. And we have to make sure that all originals are kept, at all times.
So-
That's what I have.
Cheryl, my first question is, if, I think I'm muted, hold on.
No, you're not.
I'm muted, well, no, I hear an echo, so. If, I noticed that there was part of the exhibit, if our orders, and this is, and this is true not only for city councils and Board of Aldermen's and so forth across the municipality, but also at the State House, that a copy of a bill, and in this particular, a copy of an order, is not available to the public until it's filed? Because if a state rep plans on filing something, you don't actually see a copy of it until it's filed, and officially, this order's not filed until Monday night, 7:00 PM, when we begin our meeting. If that's the case, then how is it that this complaint had a copy of the original order that was filed with the Attorney General's office?
So why? If it's going to be on the agenda, which is posted before Monday night, that's when the bill should be filed, right? It's sort of like our committee reports, when you take something out of committee and you know you are going to take it out, it should be on the agenda, it shouldn't just show up Monday night, in our practice. Because people aren't, sort of like the TIF Monday night, nobody knew that was going to be there. Not one person. So if you're going to complain about it, there's going to be a problem with that, because if it was coming out of committee, it should have been under committee reports or something like that. We don't really do committee reports recently, we used to do them in the past, they used to be written or at least verbally stated on the floor, but they got a copy of this after the fact. They requested a copy of this after the fact. So it was after your meeting which had all of that information.
So going forward-
So we're different than the state legislature, we're, you know, I mean.
So going forward, you're stating that not only should we be posting the agenda, but all the bills that are filed, a copy of all orders should be posted?
So, everything you're going to discuss or deliberate upon should be part of your agenda, not meaning word for word. If you say, if you want a copy of it, contact the city council's office, you can share it, but we get our packets Friday, so they're available Friday. So all these late orders, late communications, the reason you read them is because you did not have them timely enough for people to see them before the council meeting. So we really, really should stick to our deadlines, unless it's an emergency measure or someone who speaks, who wants to speak, will be read during a public hearing, information, you know what I mean, their statement.
But what I'm asking, and what I'm, I'm asking is that for future, we can have, we all receive a hard copy of the packet. Communications are included in there, the orders that counselors are planning on introducing or have introduced and will be introducing are in there, the orders that are second readings are in there. Are you suggesting that that whole packet be electronically posted on a Monday night so that anyone who's interested to take a look at it can see it and is following along? Whether it's-
So, I think that's a very nice thing to do, and I don't see any reason wrong for doing it. I'm not saying it's mandatory, because, for example, resolutions may change, they may be updated, but you have it, I don't see any reason why you would not just scan it in, because she scans it anyway and posts it on the website. It's just, it's just part of open government and being more transparent, this is what we're voting on.
Okay. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Mr. President, for having this meeting call in. I actually had that question on the, on my notes here. For instance, if we have a issue or a counselor that would like to bring something from out of subcommittee and vote on it tonight, is that a violation of the open meeting law? Because it wasn't stated on the original agenda.
By reading it straight out, technically, yes, it is. It should be on the agenda. If you reasonably know, unless it's an emergency, it should be on the agenda. On conference reports or subcommittee reports, if you're taking it out, it should be on the agenda.
Correct.
Because then all of a sudden, even for your own fairness, when you take things out of subcommittee, nobody knows what it is. They don't know what it said. They're always looking around for a piece of paper. If it's already in the packet, you're, you're voting on what you, what you have in front of you. And the public does, too. Sometimes, like at the end, the Zoom wasn't working Monday night, but I was like, okay, did you just vote on the TIF? That's a major, major vote, to give somebody tax credit, you know what I mean, financing, and, and it wasn't on the agenda.
So follow, to, just to follow up with Calvin, does that also, would you also say that, that is the same rule that we should be following, or guidance for items that are laid on the table? Because-
So, if you're pulling it off the table, yes.
Okay.
So, so just bear with me. So moving forward, we have an item from the subcommittee on the agenda, there's no, hypothetically, there's no mention on the agenda. What if we have on the agenda, it was going to be community, committee reports, and we have public safety, and, you know, bargain in agreement? And that night, we act from the subcommittee of public safety to take a committee report out and then vote on it, will that be sufficient?
So are you asking me that in the subcommittee, you vote to take it out of subcommittee?
No, I'm saying that on the agenda, that was posted on Friday or Thursday for the public, that it states that the public record, Public Works and Public Safety will have committee reports. It's listed.
Yeah.
That night at the meeting, at 7:30, the chair of Public Safety or Public Works asks that his report or her report be pulled from committee and to vote on. Is that something we can do?
Yeah, but I would put it on the agenda, exactly.
Okay, so I agree. I, another question I had, if we're now going to move in a direction where our secretary or our administrators from the city council would now bring the agenda to the city clerk's office, what would be 48 hours, weekday hours, for delivery at the city clerk's office?
The city clerk has a deadline of 3:30, I believe, on Thursday? I, I mean, Fatima's there, I think it's 3:30.
So is that 48 hours, weekday from, to Monday? That's my question.
It's all day Friday, and it's all day Monday.
Okay, alright, okay.
So you're stating, just to clarify, that our agenda for Monday night's meeting, on a normal Monday night meeting, would have to be sent, the deadline to be sent to the city clerk is Thursday, 3:30?
Wednesday.
I believe, yes. I believe there's some timeline, because the clerk's office gets crazy and may not get it posted, but I know it's Thursday afternoon, I'm not quite sure the exact deadline date, timeline.
So, well, 48 hours is, if we, unless we have a 6:00 PM meeting, 48 hours would be 6:00 PM on Thursday, so.
Yeah, but I mean, we close at 4:00, so yeah.
So yeah. So, so, I still, I still got a question with that, because you said the city clerk's office get kind of busy and stuff, but it's, regardless of how busy they get, if we're going to meet the open meeting law, we still have to have it submitted, correct?
That's why they require it a half an hour before closing, so they get to it. They don't just close and not do the job, but they ask that the clerical staff that is doing the agendas of all boards and commissions do it so that they're not scrambling around, and they do it correctly. So I think that's why there's a 3:30 deadline for staff, but not a 3:30 deadline for posting of the agenda.
Well, in actuality, that's courtesy, but the deadline would be at 4 o'clock, plus they close at, close at 4:00. I understand that, you know, it gets busy, but we, we get busy up here also at city council, getting the- Yeah, but it's the weekday hour, that's why I questioned that, too. I mean-
The question, Cheryl, is, because we closed at noon on Friday, is that given about business hours or regular work, you know, because, you know-
It's regular hours of workdays, so us closing at noon has nothing to do with the fact that you have access to the calendar. To the, it's website available, so it's not like you can't see the agenda. Most people don't even walk into City Hall anymore to look at it, anyway.
Well, that's why, I mean, my last part of the question, that's why it's important for us to have at least to that 4 o'clock hour.
So I would tell you 4 o'clock, and then staff would run down at 5 past 4:00. So that's why-
They can't.
Process-wise, as we say, 3:30, you're hanging on to it too much. Counselors, you can't get to Fatima at quarter of 4:00 and think she's going to get it all typed in already and be able to, let ahead and run it down. I, I mean, you got to be fair to people who need to walk out the door at 4:00, when you have all week to put something on the agenda.
Yeah, but we, and, and again, playing the devil's advocate here, we know that, but that's not our intention, but the reality is, we have up until 4:00, so whether she get there quarter to 4:00 or 10 of 4:00, we still have that. We would hope, the professionalism of our office here, we would meet that 3:30 deadline, but we do have to 4:00. That's my, that's my concern.
Well, if it makes you feel better, you have to 4:00, counselor. I mean, they don't turn anybody away, it's just an internal process that, under union contracts, we're not going to force overtime, because a counselor needed something on an agenda, and it's running down 5 past 4:00, and the office is closed. So I'm just saying to you is that we'd like to set deadlines so everybody follows them, but, you know, the city clerk's office has never turned anybody away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Cheryl, you mentioned that the order that is a copy of this complaint is public record, but that is not posted, it's not posted by us, it's not posted by the city council clerk or administrator. So did you receive a request for this copy of the order? Because we never, we, we never received a copy of that request.
So actually, the request went directly to your city council secretary. It's supposed to go through my office, and the mix up there is that, when, when she sent it out saying, "This is the only document I have," not the original, it went out with a copy to the law department, because you're supposed to send a request. Wait, 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 wait. But the originals, after I met with Fatima, because I know the city system, and I know when you scan something, there's an email, so I found it through Ramon, we do have the original, right? And we do have the revised, so-
Agendas. You have the original, but what I'm talking about is the order.
Oh, yeah, those are public, they could get those from anybody. They're public records.
Where are they public records?
They're a public record because they exist. They don't have to be in one particular location, they could ask for a copy of it.
But what I'm asking you is, did, if, if the request for a copy of that order didn't go to our office, did it go to your office? Did you receive a request for a copy of that order?
I, I don't know if that didn't go to your office. I do know copies of it is posted when the actual minutes are posted, so I don't know where that, that copy came from. It could have came from anybody, once it, once it, people have copies of it.
But that's what I'm saying, the order, it wasn't in a copy of the minutes, because the minutes were posted after this was filed, so there's no way, so what I'm asking is-
I don't know how they got a copy.
So did your office, was your office, what I'm asking is, was your office contacted and requested a copy of the order?
No.
Okay, and it wasn't requested through our office, and it wasn't posted as official minutes of the meeting at the time that this was filed? So a copy of this order was provided to the complaint outside of City Hall regular channels, is what I'm saying?
Well, if you sent the order to a department, a department has a copy of it, right? A department has to look at it, the city manager might have, anybody would have had it and gave a copy of it, because it's not against the law to give a copy of a public record, right? So they got it somehow. There's 11 counselors, somebody could have gave a copy of it.
Okay, so basically, it wasn't a request, it was, it could be, because if a department had, if, if this was a copy, again, if the director of the planning development is asked for a copy of a, of an order or something, don't they then also, like we're doing with our office, have to send all public information requests to you?
That is correct.
So no department had-
But you do know that, that was before a public board?
Right. So, so basically- So, so basically, no city clerk, the city clerk, the law dep, oh, well, you're the law department, but the city clerk, ISD and community and development cannot provide, wouldn't have been able to provide this order without it going through you first, correct?
Yes, most don't provide without going through me.
Okay.
Or they could have got it through from Fatima also.
Well, that, didn't that request then come through the office, so now, now we know where the order came from.
But staff, in all fairness to me and, um, Fatima, if staff comes in and says, oh, can I see a copy of that order? We give it all, right? Because it's, it's a document we're all working off of at that point.
But it was, it was not, it wasn't through official channels is what I'm getting.
It was not a written public records request.
Okay.
But it's City Hall.
Counsel Robinson.
I'm a little confused on, on, on a few thing, a few things here. One, when things appear on the agenda, you know, you, you mentioned about the TIF. So the TIF was presented a while ago. And then, and, um, the fact of the matter is that it went to conference, it was in conference, and this board has a right to pull, take it out of conference and make a motion and move it. So now you're saying that all these things need to be, we need to know ahead of time, um, to be able to have it put on the agenda, that we're going to be taking it out of conference and vote on it. Is that correct?
So the whole thing is, what I'm saying is that you voted on something that the public did not know was coming up for a vote. They all could have showed up that night if they were for it, if they were against it. Taking it out of conference is one thing, putting it on the floor to be voted is another thing.
Oh, but it was, but it was on the agenda.
Uh, it wasn't on my agenda. It may have been Monday night, I didn't see it.
Yeah. Right, it was on, it was on, it was on the, it was on the official agenda. That's what I'm, 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 I'm confused about.
Oh, it was on the agenda Monday night?
Yes.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, it was a, oh, well, the subcommittee posting was, yeah.
The subcommittee posting was, but not that the fact that it was going to be part of the agenda of Monday night.
Not the actual order.
No.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Right, so yet now, but you're saying we can't do that any longer.
We should not.
Well, it's been, it's been past practice since I've been here that you can.
So I have to tell you, Leo, when I started here, committee reports were always brought out.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and this is not even on the agenda. I have the agenda for Monday night in front of me. I don't even see the TIF even mentioned. And if it is past practice, it's a violation of the open meeting law. Past practice is not a term that gets you by the open meeting law.
Well, we, we've been.
It's a, um, collective bargaining thing, but it's not a, a, a past practice can, you know, I mean, it can't violate the law. And I'm just saying is that TIF is just something I'm mentioning because it just happened, but we do it a lot. We take things out of committee and then we move to have something under suspension and everyone hasn't even read it yet and it just move, it just gets adopted sometimes out of a committee. That violates, as a resident, a member of the public watching it or being in attendance, we have no clue what is being voted on. It's the vote, not the fact that you brought it out of committee. But in order to vote for it, you have to move it out of committee. And that's your process and your process, yes.
Right, so, yeah, so we, we removed it from committee and, and took a vote on it. And if you were, if you were watching the, following the whole process, you would have knew at some point that it was going to be taken out of committee and, and voted on it.
But you have to know when. Just because you know you eventually have to vote on it, doesn't mean you're going to do it this Monday or next Monday. Because I didn't know.
Well, it takes me back then to a situation we had last year in regards to, um, taking something out of committee and vote on it because it was a deadline that we need to get it passed. And then there was a question from me, whether it was legal or not, that my opinion never should have happened, but we were advised that it was okay to vote on it.
You advised me because it was an emergency measure? Emergency measures are different.
It didn't say that it was an emergency measure.
The, the fact that you had to, you said, you, you just told me that something that you did last year had a deadline. So you had to get it voted on. So that makes it an emergency, right?
I don't think that that's the, I don't think that that's the legal definition.
So.
No, that's not a legal definition. And if, for it to, if to be an emergency order, it has to state in the original order that it is under an emergency, um, yeah, under emergency or under emergency.
I don't know what legal definition you're, you're referring to, but emergency measures would affect health and welfare of the public or a condition that could be, end up being harmful to the city. I'm just saying that notice to the public, this is why we have a violation now, is because they felt they didn't have reasonable notice based on how the order was written. There wasn't even a, a order as to TIF on Monday night. So that clearly could be led to possibly a violation.
Possible.
If people, I, I said possibly.
Okay.
And I said, because of the way that you always do it, there's an argument here, but I'm pretty sure the Attorney General would say fix that. And that's why I'm offering and recommending that if you know you're going to take something out of committee, it's hard when it's a Monday night subcommittee, but if you know Thursday, just put it, the order that you're going to vote on, on the agenda.
That, that's, that's fair enough.
And that's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, my, well, my other question, as if we're talking about all the, all these things, is that, so we no longer on the floor can offer an amendment to an order that's on the agenda?
No, that's not true. You can, you can offer a friendly amendment.
Okay, well, thank you.
Anyone on my left? Um, any councillor at, uh, from Zoom land would like to ask. Oh, I see councillor Judith Garcia, I see.
Thank you, Mr. President. So now that we've established somewhat agreed on some of these terms, can we have them in writing to ensure that everyone is on the same note? And what department, Cheryl, could you take care of that? Of putting everything in writing?
I would think that that should be part of the, we do right now have a, um, a movement or an order to do a revise, revi, revision, revision of our, of our city council rules. And we should be including that, not only about how we act towards each other in civility, but also how these orders are presented and so forth. That should also be part of the, uh, our rules. We currently just have typically the rules discuss the manner of operation. So it's easy to include this as part of those revised rules and, um, make those rules also public and posted so that even our constituents know what rules we're following.
Perfect. And, and the public record stuff has been sent to Fatima and actually Lourdes because we've given to all department heads a, um, a refresher on it. Um, I, we did a PowerPoint in senior staff. Um, I know I've shared it with my staff because we get the public records request. I will enforce through department heads that they share that with their staff. Um, we do do the open meeting law. Everybody has that in that booklet I give out every two years to city councillors. It hasn't changed much since 2017. Um, so I, I just think we should just keep mindful that whatever you do, the public has to know and know. Exactly, Judith, good job.
So.
I'm the one who does her homework, yeah?
To my colleagues, um, I know that we're not allowed to say, make motions or votes in subcommittee, but, um, can I have a general consensus that we all agree that Cheryl will be our representative, city solicitor to write the, um, response to the complaint? Okay, that's the understanding. So Cheryl, we don't have a formal order, but you have consensus from this body that you will be the designated, uh, individual to respond to the complaint and send a copy to the, um.
Complainer.
Complainer. Alright.
I will attach the original agenda and the revised agenda. Judith, what you missed was that you wanted the removal of the Fair Share Act. Next time it should stay on the agenda and just withdraw it at that time on Monday night. That was one of the revisions made to the agenda on, um, in April.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
You can always watch the repeat on YouTube, by the way.
Yeah, I was planning to do that, so thank you, everyone.
Okay, um, seeing no further business in front of the council on the subcommittee, I will now, uh, conclude this meeting. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.